Call the meeting to order, please. Please make sure your cell phones are turned off or unvibrate. Motion to approve the agenda.
I've so moved.
Moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Approve the minutes from last meeting?
I didn't see anything different, so I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second? Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay? Chris, I'm sorry, but I forgot the payroll. It's been approved. It's sitting out at my desk on the file cabinet. I'll bring it in to you. I'll get it to you tomorrow. Bills to be paid for Annie?
Yep. No additions.
The GPS, the two GPS is there. And then if you go all the way down to the bottom there and see the Wesco, those three bills are for the new additions, so those will come out of our bond money that we've got sitting in a savings account, so.
Did the turbine get fixed?
Yes.
Did.
And it's running again now.
Isn't it?
Mark said it was a fuse or something. Easy. Martin fixed it today and.
I see it was going, so it's running again.
That's good.
Any other questions on the bills to be paid for Francis? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make that motion for the bills.
Second? Moved and seconded to approve the bills to be paid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carried. We will now, anything from Joe? CDVG update?
Hey, can I say one thing about the bills?
Sure.
We're not too far off that.
Sure.
You guys noticed the generator was seventy-two fifty? That's what the twenty-five KW generator cost us at the last meeting. You guys wrote it to spend less than ten thousand dollars, so I just wanted to update you. That's what it cost us. Go ahead and say sorry about that.
That's no problem.
CDVG, you got anything from Joe?
Well.
Oh.
Bracelets, with the G.
But what I want to talk about the transformers. We've been talking a little bit about changing the transformer down there and using a transformer that's got vegetable oil basically in it. So called a couple of companies and we got several bids. Basically, what I did was took the cost and put on lowest cost first. There's five bids here. TNR Electric, of course, is going to be a used machine. It's a rewound machine is what it is. Not a machine, it was transformer, sorry. And Mark and I talked a little bit. This one's fifty-one hundred. The other ones, the cheapest one is fifty-eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So for about seventy, seven hundred dollars, you can have a brand-new transformer. Mark thought it was worth the seven hundred dollars.
You can say those are a breaker.
I mean, I don't know how I feel about that. This has a better warranty than the other one does, but I don't know.
I mean, these used ones.
You always get a better warranty.
They have new ones.
If you look right here, right below the five thousand and ninety-five dollars.
Thirty-six months.
Thirty-six month. A brand-new transformer has a one-year warranty.
He did something.
It's kind of ridiculous.
Well, Bob Meads used to say, you know, he says, hey, you probably better off with the used one than the new one. Remember that? He says, they do a hell of a job, but I'm not saying which is right here, but.
And you know what? I'm not sure that for seven hundred dollars, it makes that much difference.
No.
If you guys want to get a used one, I think it'd work just fine for a hundred years. And if you want to get a brand-new one, I think the same thing.
Well, but if you're warranties thirty-six months versus twelve months?
That's a little.
We've got quite a few. I don't want to call transformers from TNR. They've never done us wrong yet, so.
I would agree with that, Frank. They look at.
Got those big ones out there.
That big one we just bought was from them, you know, so.
Really be overworking this, maybe, means really?
No.
Just running the well, right? That won't kick in. Just kicking in immediately. It ain't going to be running every day. I don't know how they'll inter-flick, but.
Yeah, it won't run every day, but it'll run.
Yeah.
You know? Probably at least once a week or once every other week. And these are all, all of the bids that you see here are, some of them have the twenty-five KW and the forty-five KW or KVA. I get confused. And that's, I mean, Rick is right. We should do one instead of two because basically a forty-five KVA is the same price as a seventy-five KVA. So you're just paying for the twenty-five if you do two. So I think one is the way to go. But like I said, it doesn't make one bit of difference to me if you get a new one or a used one, a rewound one, let's call it.
Discussion, council?
Well, for two years more warranty on the used one, I had seven hundred dollars less. I don't know if it's worth it or not.
I said, like I said, I don't think there's a wrong mystery.
No.
I think it's just, I mean, we need to get one because if we get one of these, I just got an email from Jennifer Bond and she said that the FR3 oil will work. Then we wouldn't have any containment issues. We wouldn't have how close we can put it to the well, any of that issue.
It was a couple thousand dollars just doing that, probably. Probably was around.
We just, we just put it down there and the DNR doesn't bother us anymore, so.
I'd make a motion to purchase the TNR one then.
Second?
I'd second that.
Moved and seconded to approve purchasing the TNR electric transformer. Cost of five thousand ninety-five dollars, I believe is what I seen, yes.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion passed. Discuss and approve corn belt lot marketing?
We met in Waldeke Industrial Corp last Tuesday in.
Page twelve, by the way.
Page twelve, yeah, on here. We came up with this for a proposal for marketing those lots down there. Would like the city council's approval on that. There's three lots available. They're twenty-five by a hundred feet each. So if you purchased all three of them, they would be seventy-five by a hundred. Lots would be twenty, ten thousand dollars each. I know we paid forty-eight thousand dollars for them. And if we can get somebody on them with some kind of incentive and get a building on there, then I think we thought that this would be a good incentive. Therefore, the total of all three of them would be thirty thousand dollars. Lot purchase rebate, that would be a good deal, up to ten percent of the total construction cost.
And I put those words in there. I put up to the cost of the lot. So if somebody builds a five-hundred-thousand-dollar building, we're not going to give them an extra twenty thousand dollars.
But we thought if somebody would come in and were to take that seventy-five by a hundred lot and build a three-hundred-thousand-dollar building, then basically we would rebate them the money back that they spent on the lot.
You would do that on a TIF.
Yeah, if they went individually, we could do it that way too.
So we'd get the TIF.
Actually, we wouldn't even pay them money.
Right, right, right.
We just wouldn't ask them for it that way, basically.
We do have the TIF monies there. We have about a hundred thousand dollars in our account. What is it, ninety?
Ninety-seven, I think, or something like that.
So we felt that the Waldeke Industrial Corp could do this, a down payment loan available of up to twenty-five percent of the construction costs at a one percent rate, which is something that is in our bylaws that we can do. That way, we can entice somebody to build a building and we would loan them the first twenty-five percent of it so they could go to the bank and borrow money. If they didn't have any, and if they, you know, one percent, I think they would maybe look at doing a little more, the possibility of doing a little more than what they first had in mind, you know, or something like that. It's another way to use our tax rate, give them financing money in a way to get something there. Sale of the lot is contingent on, sale of the lots, is contingent on a twelve-month building. Twelve-month, a lot of construction does not begin within twelve months of purchase. So now, obviously, if somebody's got in the works and they haven't broken ground yet, we would still be probably pretty lenient or pretty reasonable to work with somebody on. But all we want is, we want something on that lot if they're going to purchase it, you know. He could look at it and, you know, and there's, the guy might go, you know, I wouldn't mind buying it, you know, just to have it in case I wanted it someday, you know, or resell it or something like that. That's what we're after. We're after somebody who wants it to put a building on it so that we can start to regain a revenue off of it, not only with our tax base, but also with our utilities. And then the facet incentive, what we have with the Waldeke Industrial Corp and the TIF monies there is there's a hundred dollars per foot to help somebody improve their, the face of their building. Always had that. So if you do the whole seventy-five feet, let's say sixty-foot building or something like that, you know, or, but anyway, there's a hundred dollars per foot. And that would be an incentive to use there.
Use brick or something, maybe, look, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, of course, our city utilities are readily available. We would like to market it as this. And we're just throwing that out for the city council to look at, you know, I mean, Waldeke Industrial Corp would like to have the go-ahead to go ahead and market the lot if they could, because what they can do then is they can talk to people and not have to report it to Curtis right away. We can talk to people in private, you know, so that we can actually get something done. And it would be, it would be a nice thing to do. Also, we have, did you talk with Shirley or?
Actually, what I did was I emailed this, something that looked like this, to Shirley Phillips and to Chloe Wallace, and asked them for any suggestions that they may have. And then, once we talk to you guys and get any changes that you guys may want, then we're going to ask those two ladies to help us with marketing this also.
Discussion, questions for Rob?
I think this is really well thought out.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
I think it's a good agenda.
Committee did a really good job of.
I think you got change anything.
I'd entertain a motion.
Oh, only one thing on this TIFTI. Like I said, we've got a number on how many years that would run, maybe. Anything on that?
The loan?
Yeah, I mean, like, yeah, what is that?
Talked a little bit about ten, fifteen, twenty years, you know.
Maybe should be something in there or not.
Probably.
We'll have to check up on how many years is left in that district.
Right.
Yeah, but are you talking about the down payment loan?
No, no. Well, yeah, you know, when you set up a TIFTI or the use of the TIF, sometimes you get so many years before she comes on the tax roll.
But I think on a revolving, if it's a revolving loan, like what we want to do is loan the money.
Yeah.
We don't have to worry about that.
No, there's no limit there.
I don't believe so, but we'll check.
That shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
But I can, I'll certainly check on that for you.
You want to vote tonight then, or you want to say what?
I would, no, I think.
No, I would like to get a market.
Yeah, we definitely want to do that.
And I, you know, I would put that in a form of a motion if everybody's.
Yeah.
If it's acceptable for everybody, it's fine.
Move? Yes.
Did you say, did you say what the, I'm sorry, the interest rate would be on the twenty-five percent?
One percent.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to accept the corn belt lot proposable, proposable for the three lots for sale? I'm going to do a roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Franny?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Don?
Actually, Travis, you want to start?
Pass the buck, right?
No, I mean, really, well, you guys, I'm sure you guys all know that our bid was opened, was it last Tuesday?
Thursday.
Or last Thursday?
Thursday.
And it came in right at two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I believe, was the exact amount.
Yeah.
Right now, we have banked almost, or raised almost two-hundred-and, what, five thousand? Two-hundred-and-five thousand of that from grants and people making large donations to us. But we would like to go ahead and get that approved so that Jamie can start and they can start doing the dirt work as soon as it dries up. We are short of, you know, our goal is two-hundred-and-seventy thousand with parking on the west and the north. If we take out the parking at this point in time and don't do it, that was like twenty-three thousand dollars. We can do later. And then we've had the lumberyard look at what the engineers had all in the plan and shave down some things that we don't think were necessary, which would be around, we're hoping around twenty thousand dollars. Like, they had cabinets in there at twenty thousand dollars. Well, we think, we don't even need upper cabinets, we don't think. So we just want lower, so we think we can get by with maybe even five thousand, shave, you know, money out of there. And if we don't raise all the money, we'll just have to keep shaving things off, like the acoustics and those sort of things. But right now, we're at about forty-two thousand if we want to do everything but the parking.
Forty-two thousand?
Sure.
Sure.
Now, with all the, you know, this is the bid that came in with cook siding giving us a break. They're giving us steel siding instead of vinyl, giving us enough price break. It's, the lumberyard giving us fifteen thousand dollar price break. It's Jamie, shouldn't have been giving us fifteen thousand off later. It's Healy's giving us, I can't remember, eleven thousand.
Basically, it's seventy-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars were donated from the local contractors who submitted their bids.
The Waldeke hardware also.
Right, which, if you look at what everybody gave us, discounts on top of what the bid is, it's a three-hundred and.
Three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollar building is really what we're looking at. Take the seventy-five out and we need to raise two-hundred-and-ninety of it from the donations that we got from the guys that put the bid in. And we're short thirty-six-five as of today.
Even cabinets out, you're still short thirty-six-five or?
Okay.
I mean, we haven't even gone out and really asked the public. We haven't gotten much farther than a lot of the grants. Now, if we don't move forward with this, we will have to give fifty thousand dollars of the money back to Gil Renzi and to Sack Foundation, and we don't want to do that.
Now, do you think there's a chance we can either raise that thirty-six?
Absolutely.
You sure, shouldn't you?
Yes. I think there's a chance we can raise the eighty. We're not going to stop fundraising, is what we're saying. I mean, we're going to keep going out there, but we maybe do need some of your help, you know, to talk to other people or to promote the project. But we just really want to get moving on it because we have to have stages done within time limits of this year.
Is there startup time, when you have to start this year? You got to start this year or you got to start?
August first is your start time for, actually, both of, the Renzi and the Foundation, so.
Right. You get just a little time. You got some time to raise some money here and see how.
Right, but we really don't have time to wait and raise the money and not be working on it. I mean, we need to start getting the dirt work done and those sort of things. So we just really are here to get the bid approved and.
Well, you know, I guess I'd like to hear what kind of plans do we have to raise money from here on out. I mean, what are we specifically going to do?
We've talked about some fundraisers, adult fundraiser, comedian fundraiser. Chris and I have talked about the REAP grant application. We haven't tried that. You know, just, there's Walmart, there's Sears, so.
About just to direct appeal to the community.
We've started that. We've sent a few letters to some people.
Well, you know, but what about everything?
Well, that's the other thing. We can advertise it. Nothing's really been in the paper.
Right, right.
You know, so.
I wasn't asking, I'm just curious as to.
We haven't started there.
There's, I think there's people out there that'll give twenty-five dollars too, you know, and it's.
Right, everything matters. We don't care what the dollar amount is.
I told the group to hold off on asking everybody. Don made a list. We're ready to send a letter out. And we talked on Monday because the bid was read on Thursday, but we wanted to wait, I guess I did, to see what the city council, what your guys' thoughts are on the building and where we're sitting at before we start sending out a mass mailing to everybody. So that's kind of why we haven't yet, because we wanted, we knew there was only a week before we were going to talk to you and see what your guys' thoughts were on the project.
Well, I, you know, I'm not against the project. I'm for the project, but I just, you know, I just, we're going to commit, let's say, fifty thousand dollars here, you know, and maybe or maybe not, you know, and it's, we don't really have that right now.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we're asking, what's the next proposal, you know, are we going to, I mean, what's our next plan? Are we just going to?
Now, I would take that a step further and say that I think that the city would be very, very involved in the building of the building. We want you guys to start it, but to say that we can pony up another fifty or sixty or whatever it needs to be.
We're not asking for that.
And that's what we want to clarify a little bit.
If it goes in and happens and we don't raise any more money, then we are, you are.
The city's stuck in a final.
I mean, that's the other side of the bed.
We would never, I mean, again, I don't think we'll ever give up the fundraising portion of it. You know, we'll just do what we, you know, what we can with the resources we have. But when there's only a few people on the group, and like I said, we haven't even asked the public yet, really. So I, I don't, I personally don't think we're going to have a problem with the forty thousand at all.
I honestly don't think you will either. I mean, there's a lot of time to get that one raised.
I just, you probably need a few more in the committee to help you.
Yes, Gary.
Huh?
And we'll take any donation you're willing to.
No, I mean, help, help. You've got enough committee members to work with you to make it work?
Well, we can always use more.
Well, I just wondered how many. You can always ask people to.
Yeah, I mean, it's the four of us sitting here and Eric and Steve.
Yeah, that's not, that's quite a load for you guys to work. You got to be at it.
I think it's a good project because look how many people go to Lakeview to use their shelter house.
Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
We agree, Los. You know, we're not against the project.
No, but I mean, I think it's a good project.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, you guys, you guys want to go ahead and go, you know, you want to make sure that this is okay, okay. And then, all of a sudden, when it's all said and done, well, we okayed the project and we didn't raise any more money, so all of a sudden, we got to come up with more money, you know. That's, that's what we're talking about right now. That's why I'm asking, what are your plans for raising more money, you know? I just, that was my only reason for asking that. Yeah, I think it's a very worthwhile project. I'm not against that at all. But, yeah, I think we need to move forward. When would we have, when would be a completion date then or anything like that, you know?
Well, I mean, I think Jamie, if he can get going and weather cooperates, I mean, I think it would be done by November.
We talked about what, December first, didn't we?
It has to be done by December first, or we, I mean, at least for.
So that's basically when the rest of the money needs to be raised by.
Well, or whenever Jamie finishes and it turns his last bill in, you know.
I mean, that's, that's a date that we needed in the future.
Yeah.
Is there a shot at any more grants going?
I mean, we can't apply for the Foundation grant again. We can't apply for Renzi when we, I mean, started the project, so those two are both out. So, I mean, the REAP grant's a long shot, but it would save our life if we, you know, if we got it, but it's an intensive application.
And it's due August fifteenth, so that's not something that we can wait on.
Yeah. So I guess what we need to do is bang on doors and ask for public donation.
Right.
I know we talked at community club the other night about our farm festival kickoff, that we would invite the public to come to that and give a free will donation to the shelter house and have a burger and those kind of things, you know, just to get them down to the park because that's where we always have it. And give them a burger and whatever we've got down there with it, you know, and ask people to come and, you know, we could coordinate some type of. And I realize that's going to, you know, that maybe raise you a couple thousand dollars, I don't know, but.
No, it's our thoughts right now. We're not looking to get, we, you know, we don't have the manpower to do forty thousand dollars. We've talked, we're going to have to do a few two, three thousand dollar ones and start adding it up. So that's really what we are looking for is, you know, any events we can do that limited manpower to raise a couple thousand at a time.
You know, Speed has offered to do something for us, so maybe we need, you know.
Speed, you mean? Yeah, I thought about Speed. One time we had a deal down there for raising money. Was that, was that for the park? That's for the part of the deal.
Yeah.
But this is for the shelter house, so.
I'm not sure that's the right time, just because it's going to be a terrible mess and there'll be a lot of questions. You know, and we're already in the process. We can't change it now. And, you know, those people didn't come to our planning meetings, so now we're committed. You know, so, but, I mean, anything, just let us know if you think of anything, because, I mean, our next step is, you know, the letters and advertising and door-to-door to some of the businesses and people in town, and actually even the people in the country.
I got two donations last week.
Yeah, she asked. People worked over some money.
They were.
Well, you know, I think there's a, if you ask, I think there's a lot of hundred and two-hundred and five-hundred dollar donations out there too, you know, you just.
We'll take it.
Well, you basically think you can raise the thirty-six thousand, huh? That's what you're.
Absolutely.
Now, that's the key right there.
Then what do we need? Do we need a motion to move forward with this or?
We need a motion to accept the bid from Jamie, from JDS Construction, I guess.
But you're talking with all the stuff that's out there, the bid for less now, you're. How do you go change?
Well, he can't.
The bid is for, not for the two-seventy, whatever it was, or two-sixty-nine, is that what it was?
But we're not going to know what the dollar amount is, Gary, until they get in and start doing stuff.
It's hard for us to put a motion on what we got.
Well, I think that what we need to do is put a motion in for the bid as it is, and then we can do change orders from there.
Yeah, you got to come up with some way, so you know, you got a number here in a little bit, right?
The number is.
You have it.
Two-sixty-nine, I know it's.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
The number is what the bid is, and then if we've got change orders that need to be put in, then we'll do that at that time, you know. And if we don't have the money to do it, then you got to come up with a change order to change it.
Personally, I just, I don't like the idea of cutting corners and taking stuff out. I know there are some things that can be taken out, but I think you're taking away from the building again when you start doing stuff like that. So I think it, I think we need to stay positive and push forward and keep this thing on track, keep it on the front burner and get the money raised up for it. The last thing we want to do is put up a building and then say, well, we should have just went ahead and did that, but we didn't do it. Now we don't have money. We're never going to get the money to do it again, so we only get one chance at this.
The big thing is to get the money raised.
Well, I think that's, I think it can be done. I think.
I do too.
We got to ask for, solicit people in the community, and I think it'll happen. You know, we just, that push hasn't been made yet.
Oh, I would move to accept the bid from Jamie Sherrill for two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to accept the bid from, what did you call it?
JDS Construction.
JDS Construction for the erection of the shelter house at the city park in Waldeke, Iowa. Roll call vote. Rob?
Will call vote, Rob?
Three dollars?
Two sixty-nine.
Two sixty-nine, I don't know.
Will call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Fran, uh, Gary?
Yes.
Franny?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, guys.
And let us know if you have any ideas or, or anything.
Okay. Discuss, approve, SETD, Don?
Um, just here as the representative, um, I don't know, have all of you met Chloe Wallace, our new director for SETD?
No.
Okay.
She has talked about coming.
Okay. Um, I think she's gonna be at the lead meeting. Just, is it this week?
Yes, Thursday.
Thursday. She will be at the meeting. Um, her goal right now is she's been going around to each community trying to talk to the city manager, and she's making time to talk to each one of us board members, kinda asking us what our goals are for SETD and what we wanna see, you know, done to help impact our community. So, I, you know, if I was you guys, I'd be thinking of some things, either, you know, let Chris know, let me know, or let her know, because she's very proactive in trying to, um, you know, get information so that we can set goals that are really gonna help each of our individual locations.
That'd be for the nine cities in Sack County.
Yeah.
Yeah, she came down here last Tuesday, I think it was. She emailed both of us and you were busy and I wasn't, and I was busy and you weren't, and so we, I haven't got a chance to meet her yet either, so. But if she's gonna be at the Northwest Iowa Lead Meeting, uh, hopefully she's talked to Adam and got on the agenda then, or maybe she can be interviewed, or I can.
I'm sure she is.
How can you take her on, you don't know?
You don't have, yeah. But I am Northwest Iowa's president, so.
Okay.
I guess I can get that much done.
Okay.
Any other questions for the shelter house committee while they're here? If not, we will move on to the Curts Report. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Curts Report, Chris?
Okay, so on page thirteen there, we got our normal cash and method and how we get from one, uh, one balance to the next. You guys noticed that transferred to savings forty-six thousand, transfer from savings forty-six thousand. Uh, we had another really large gas bill, so we had a couple of swoops come out of our savings account when that happens. And that added up to forty-six thousand, so we just put that back after we got paid from Western Iowa Lead Meeting.
That was about a swing, like a hundred and some thousand last year, last month, two, five thousand this month, so.
Yeah.
It was quite a swing.
No, that's the, that's the, uh, the reservation, Franny, that, that's something we get each month, but, but it'll be a lot less.
Yeah.
It will be.
This is the month we should make the money, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should be getting revenues in and not have to pay for any of the water.
Exactly.
And it just never happened.
Yeah.
I didn't know what it is.
Never any deal in it.
Uh, so, if you look at the next page, I did something a little different with this. Uh, this is our balance sheet. And we always have our balance sheet up there and it's got the, the name of the account way over here and the, how much is in the account way over there, so I tried to make it a little bit smaller and then I tried to, uh, gray some of that out, so you can kinda follow that across there and see what's in what account. Um, and Franny, you and I were having a discussion a, a couple of meetings ago about the, uh, accounts that we had to add. Uh, so if you look here and start on, at the top there, you got eleven twenty-two road use account, and then you go revenue, sinking, endowment, and TIP. There are two accounts in between there, uh, twenty-four and I think twenty-seven. Right now, neither one of those accounts have any money in them. Uh, twenty-four, I believe, or twenty-seven, I don't know which one it is, but one of them is in the debt service account. And that doesn't have any money in it yet because, uh, we're still trying to pay off, uh, or we're still trying to collect enough money to,
Make it zero?
Sort of make it zero, yeah. When we paid this building off, we went in the, in the hole, not forty-two thousand, so. So, that doesn't have any money in it yet. Once we get some money in, then it'll show up on here. Um, so you can look at, uh, each, every one of these accounts is, uh, is reconciled, uh, so they all have in it what they say they've got in it. Like, if you look down at the bottom of the savings wind turbine, it's got a hundred and fifty-nine thousand in it. If you remember last time we talked about it, it had two hundred and fifteen thousand in it. Well, part of that money, fifty or what, fifty-eight thousand of that money went into the TIP account. So, now that hundred and fifty-nine thousand is what we have in there for, for our wind turbine.
Right.
Uh, now we're gonna take.
You can pay that money out, out of there now for the repair.
It's, it's not out of here yet. It's gonna come out of there to pay for the, the wind turbine, and I think that bill is twenty-one thousand or something like that.
Yeah.
So, so that's how those all look. Um, when I talked about the GPS bill and the Westco bill today for the gas products and for the the electric supplies, uh, for this up here, that's gonna come out of this bottom account, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Right.
That's where our bond went into, so that's where all that money will come out of. Really don't have much else to talk about on there, uh, unless you guys have some questions. That's about all I got on that one.
Or, uh, I don't think there are savings in there. Well, that's not interest saving. Eleven twenty up there at the top.
Mm-hmm. And, and what, that one, the way I understand this whole thing, you know, I, obviously I came in kinda in the middle of everything, but the way I understand that one, the number eleven twenty, we, we save twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month into that, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That pays all of our principal and interest for our bond every year.
Right.
Right.
Then where's the bond savings account?
All the way at the bottom.
Where we put the thirteen thousand.
The bottom payment fund, yes.
And that adds, that money in it plus we're putting thirteen thousand, isn't that a? Plus, is there any water stuff in there yet too, or no?
No, that's in, that's in the, the bond savings, because, because if you look below that in the revenue sinking bond, that hundred and fifty thousand is what we have to pay our, our bonds with. And that's where we're gonna start saving our money to, to that account.
Any questions on page fifteen for Chris?
That's good, Chris.
If not, move forward, Curts.
Okay, so you can go all the way to page seventeen then. Uh, that's the first page of the general fund. And there's nothing really exciting about this page, other than we got about fifty thousand dollars with the general property taxes in last month. And we got a thousand dollar worth of park donations in. So, that's a good thing. Uh, next page is, uh, starting the expenses of the general fund. And this page doesn't really have a lot on it. It did have some, some snow removal, uh, salaries on it. I went back and looked at that and I decided to take those out of there, uh, because we didn't really have any snow removal, re- removal in April, so I took that out of there and put it into the road use account, which you'll see in a couple of pages. And then you can see pest control there, we had, uh, what's the name?
Plunkets.
Plunkets, plunkets came in and they always do mice in the winter and bugs in the summer, so.
Because they don't, when do they spray? They, that's coming up, ain't it?
Yeah, it'll be pretty shortly and.
And for the town itself?
Yeah.
They're not the ones that do it.
No, no, that, not for the people.
Oh, okay.
No, no, this is for this building.
Oh, okay.
And they do the library sometimes and.
It's like an organ type thing, yeah.
Yep, they spray around the outside for bugs and. For some reason, we've got these huge beetles around this building outside here.
We got, I got them down here too.
Yeah.
Lights?
The big black ones, they come out of my.
Oh, the lights. Oh. I don't know, these things can eat the lights as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's really a compliment. Ever since we put these big bright lights in, then that's when we get those, those bugs.
Really? They're huge. Uh, so, okay, I'm on page nineteen, I don't know. And the, and the only thing I really wanna point out on there is recreation expenditures. Uh, you can see that building grounds and maintenance, uh, three thousand dollars. A lot of that's cool, or not a lot of it's cool, it's all cool. A lot of it's paint. Um, a couple of things probably from the lumberyard in there for, for the pool, you know, we're starting to work on the pool, so.
Getting a lot of comments, good comments, that we are replacing the concrete. A lot of positive feedback.
We just needed to put rain in so we could get it done.
I know, I hear you.
Jamie was this close to doing it and then it didn't go, so. Um, next page there, if you look at that. Really nothing exciting on that page either, other than that insurance, that negative thirty-two thousand there. Usually we wait till June to allocate our insurance, bring him out to, uh, electric and water and gas. I just decided to do it right away, get it done, and then Rob can yell at me because the electric account isn't as high as it should be this month. So, that's all I got for the general fund, and then here's road use. You can see right there the twenty-six seventy-eight in, uh, road use salaries. That's what I moved over from snow removal.
Please don't hesitate to stop and ask Chris if you got any questions whatsoever, correct, Chris?
Right, yeah.
Cause he can go try and answer, or he'll find out an answer for you.
Do ask questions. And I won't bullshit, yeah. I, that's not, that's not something that I will do. If I don't know the answer, I will tell you that I don't know the answer.
And he'll research it to find the answer.
So, then you go to TIP and you can see that we're still, we're still collecting commercial TIP money. And so, and we're gonna, it's gonna come to a point where we're gonna have to really figure out what we're gonna do with this money.
Yeah.
Uh, we've got a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that's supposed to be in the account. If you guys remember, it was ninety thousand in the, uh, on that first page there, so. We still gotta come up with about forty-five thousand dollars that we put in there. And I think what I wanna do is, is wait till, uh, this next year, and when we get the forty-seven thousand dollars back from the corn belt lots, I think we'll just put that right into there.
Right, we get that out. You lower that down a little bit.
No, I won't lower that down. It'll just put it, it'll just put it into the bank account.
Right.
Right now, it's not in the bank account. This is just on this page. Uh, we've got ninety thousand of it in the bank account, but.
Any questions, Gary?
And, uh, probably not the next meeting, but the meeting after that, we'll, we'll have some expenditures out here. We'll have to pay the cookies and corn belt and, uh, cook sighting. We'll have to pay them again for the rebate agreement. And that's about, uh, that'll be, I think all total, it's about fifteen thousand dollars per year, so. Did you have some questions on that? I'll, I'll move forward.
Well, I'm just saying we have our plan here, we just need to look through our plan.
To see what we're.
Yeah, see what you say what it is.
See where we're not appropriate.
What projects do you wanna start?
And, you know, it could be, I mean, it could be something that we keep in there and, uh, we use that money for, for the electric project that we're, you know, that we're gonna have to do down here at some point in time.
Yeah, we could use quite a bit of that for that.
We could use it all, I, I think. I don't know, I don't know how much it would cost, but I would guess we could use it all.
Yeah, that's about, may have to hire that all the time because that's got, that's a different, that's a pretty.
Different animal?
Yeah, it's a different animal than up in the rural area.
I think we're getting a pretty good guy, so.
Well, I'm sure, but that's, working hot, you guys, takes some effort.
Yeah. All right. Uh, page twenty-three there, that's our debt service fund, and, and you can see that we're still three thousand two hundred and six dollars short, and the way I had it figured was we should be about twenty-eight hundred short, uh, by the end of this year. Don't know if we're gonna make it tonight, if everybody gets their tax, taxes paid, so. Let's do what we can do about this. We're kinda at the county's mercy there, so. Okay, then the next page, you got, uh, you got our utility funds. Um, you can see that the, the electric fund is a little different than it was last year. It's about twenty-three thousand dollars difference. The garbage fund is a little different. Uh, natural gas, you know, when I saw this, I was in Florida, I just could not imagine that we were a hundred thousand dollars difference between this year and last year, and I, and I went back and tried to figure out why. Um, the one thing that really stood out to me was that, uh, we had fifty-five thousand dollars worth of money that we took in from farmers when we did that project. They paid us that much money to, for their half of the project, so that's in that two hundred and eight thousand dollars that you see down there, so.
Plus, we've had a lot more people switch over from the electric to, uh, and for propane to natural gas. I have had a substantial amount on there.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That would make this top number even better, so. I, I mean, all of the expenses look like they were, you know, equal to a little bit less. Our, uh, our, what were we just talking about? Our reservation expenses have gone up by about ten thousand dollars. But, I mean, so, so we're really close. If you had the fifty-five and the ten, you know, that's about sixty-five thousand, added to a hundred and eleven thousand, there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Is that what they call the rack money in print, where it's on the rack?
Yeah.
Is that what they call that? Reservation or rack?
Yeah, basically what it is, is just like demand in electricity. You pay for it, whether you use it or not.
It's on the rack, okay, yeah. Same thing, same terminology, just different terms.
Sure. And then you got your sewer and water, that. Sewer, I don't know, what we're gonna do with that, but. Water's similar, a little bit better than it should be. We put it in meters, so we should be selling more water. If you guys got any questions on that, let me know. Otherwise, let's get to our electric fund. So, you can see that, uh, that our, uh, revenues are about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, our expenses are about six hundred and thirty-three thousand. And what, what I did here with all this scribbling, if you remember just a page before, last year we were at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, right? Well, like I told you just a little bit ago, I allocated out the insurance. Uh, and that, you can see is twenty-three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, and that's an expense to our electric account. So, that's gonna take our, uh, our net income down by twenty-three thousand. If you added that back, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, be exactly where we were last year. Plus, we took fifty thousand out of this account earlier this year to buy the corn belt lots. We, we loaned that to the TIP. Plus, we bought a twenty-three and a half thousand dollar transformer earlier this year. Those are expenses that we just normally don't have. So, if you added all that stuff in there, we're way ahead of last year. And then you can see the streetlights, we did the streetlight project, so we had about eighty-nine hundred dollars that we had to pay for that, so. And the only reason I put all that stuff in there is because of what Rob and I talked about last, last meeting, and I promised you guys that it would go up, and it didn't. So, I had to justify why it didn't. Now, if you guys have some questions about that, please ask. But I think, I mean, the way it looks to me is we're tracking right along with where we normally are. And obviously, we haven't paid our principal and interest yet. But if you, if you add up all of those numbers, uh, the fifty thousand, the twenty-three and a half thousand, and the eighty-nine hundred, you get eighty-two thousand dollars, and that'd be almost exactly what our principal and interest payment's gonna be, so. In the way it looks to me, we're gonna be almost exactly the same place we were last year at the end of the year, once we get there.
Questions?
Well, I don't know, we discussed committing fifty thousand dollars out of this to our electric project every year too, you know.
Right.
Even above and beyond the other stuff.
The principal and interest and, yeah. And I still think we can do that, Rob. I mean, it, it sure.
It looks like we can.
Everything points to, points to that we can, so.
Can do any?
Yeah, we'll move on, unless we have questions. The natural gas fund and like I said, I added that fifty-four thousand and just, just to, you know, to look at that. And everything, everything really looks the same except for the transmission charges, and transmission charges is what, is what is, is our reservation. Basically, that just says that we pay that money just so we get the natural gas, whether we buy it or not, so. We're still making, we're still making money in that account, so it's, it's not bad. Then water. Means pretty much just normal lump in water, we didn't do anything special. We're gonna start seeing, hopefully, we're gonna start seeing some pretty good expenses in this, in this uh account. Hopefully David will be going on that, we'll start seeing some expenses in there.
Do you wanna elaborate a little bit of these first expenses, Chris?
On that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, for the, for the well and for the.
Correct, okay, yeah, so. I just wanna make sure that everybody's.
We got, we got about three hundred thousand dollars roughly to spend in there, and so.
I just wanna make sure everybody.
And, and one thing that, that I should tell you is uh, in our plan here, in our TIF plan, we have put in there that we could use uh seventy-five thousand dollars of this money, our TIF money, to drill the well. So, um, that's an idea for us to, to use some of that money.
Man, that'd make a good project, I'd be hard for that.
Yeah, so, something to think about, sewer.
It's in our TIF district, that's a key.
Yeah, sure is. Uh, yeah, sewer, you know, we've had, uh, obviously you can see there, equipment and operating supplies, about forty thousand dollars worth of uh expense that we really haven't had in there for, for several years, um, and then water sewer repairs, you know, so, uh, so that account really looks ugly. But every once in a while, I guess you're gonna have that happen, so. And then uh garbage fund.
Always a target.
Yeah. I don't know what we should do with it, if we should, if we should take some money out of one of our other accounts and, and get this to zero since we raised our, our rates, and, and that way we can actually tell if we're, if we're making money or.
Plus our money is in it.
This thing should be about breaking even, being we put the dollar on there.
And, and it should Gary, but it's difficult, it's difficult to know uh where you're at when.
Right.
You know, with your seventy-five thousand dollars in the hole to start with.
How we've been holding even with it, basically.
Well, when did we change that?
No, that's five, four months ago, it was before I left, so it must've been December or.
Do you remember that, Lynn, when we did that? Did we do it when you were here, Gary?
Yeah, I think so, you made a motion Friday on that, I was here.
I'll be back in December.
Must've been December.
So, it might probably took.
Probably started the first year.
January.
Well, in January, we were negative eighty-nine hundred, in April, we're negative eighty-one hundred, so, I mean, if you wanna, you wanna say that that's doing better. Then I would say that we're doing better, but.
Not big.
Like I said, I mean, yeah, I don't know.
Ten more months, we'll be out of the hole. I heard about ten minutes, five months.
Ten, ten more years would be good. And that's for, for this year, that doesn't count the other seventy-five thousand in the hole. But see, if you, if you look at it though, you look at the five thousand dollars down there, uh, we had to pay our quarterly, whatever you wanna call them, for the landfill, that's forty-five hundred dollars. So every time you, every time you do that, you're gonna, you're gonna go backwards for that month.
Just the eight thousand.
Well, we'll, we'll erase the eight thousand at, in Jan, in July first anyway, that'll go back to zero anyway, July first. So, we could wait and see at the end of this year, why, I was gonna say, yeah, let's wait and see.
I know, I don't wanna do it right now, the end, the end of the year would be the best thing, but I'm just trying to figure out. So you wanna begin, you want, you want us to plan for a beginning ton balance of July first and, and zero?
No, I wouldn't say that, I'd say, I'd say the eight thousand is gonna go to zero July first anyway.
Right.
So maybe what we wanna do is wait till the end of the, the, the calendar year.
December.
December thirty-first or, or whatever that is, to see what the eight thousand was like.
Yep.
And if that's actually positive at the end of the year, then maybe we pay off the seventy-five thousand and, and start fresh and, um.
Well, it'd be probably, if it would positive, it would be less than seventy-five thousand, and then we could.
Sure.
Figure out where we wanna go from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, let's uh, let's see where this thing's gonna take us to. Okay, next, to general ledger, that's just the activity and reports, yeah, any other questions for Chris? On the clerk's report? Any questions at all, any discussion? Concerns, questions? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the clerk's report?
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to accept the clerk's report, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carried. Discuss and approve hiring an electric lineman.
I don't know that we have to have much discussion on it, uh, we've talked to Myron several times and uh, we've discussed several times and we've pretty much come to an agreement.
Bartered back and forth and come to a complete agreement.
Yeah, so I thi, I think what we should do is make a motion, whoever wants to do it, make a motion to hire Myron, all right, at twenty-five dollars an hour, and we'll pay his health insurance.
And he receives two weeks vacation.
Right, and I don't think we wanna get too much more complicated than that.
Correct, I agree with that.
Yeah, just stay at that, so, if that's what you guys wanna do, that's the way I would say it.
I'll make that motion.
With his starting days of April nineteenth, correct?
May, May.
Or, I mean, May, I'm sorry, May, May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Yep.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, rather than repeating what Chris said, everybody heard exactly what he said, correct? You wanna repeat that back, Chris, or is everybody comfortable with what you said?
Comfortable.
Okay, roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
The man's been hired. But he doesn't start on Loews, he's into the house first to get arranged perfect.
So he's gotta come to my house once in a while, it's very, it comes very often, I can tell ya.
Let's just hope he's bunched out. Let's just hope he's bunched out, what do you guys want?
Yes?
I just wanna clarify, is he hired or are you offering the position?
He's hired.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, you wanna uh discuss and approve resolution, resolution twenty-fourteen oh nine, uh, you wanna elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, I think what I did here, I believe I confused myself.
No way, that's what happens on your birthday.
Watch it, mister.
Right, that, that's what happens on your birthday, you get, you have trouble there.
Okay, you guys don't get to talk anymore. Um, okay, so, so what this is, is this is Westside State Bank's.
Oh, okay.
Uh, bank account resolution, and, and all of these on here on the top, we've already, we've already done. Uh, but what I wanted to do was put in there the, the two accounts that were gonna move from Bank Midwest over to these guys. Uh, we haven't set them up yet, um, I wanted to wait till the CD came due, but it doesn't come due till twenty-fifteen, so we're just gonna take that out of Bank Midwest. I went down and, and I, I wrote a letter to Bank Midwest.
You wanna discuss that a little bit, I don't know if everybody's seen the letter that you wrote.
No, I, I didn't show it to everybody, uh, I wrote a letter, Lynn helped me write the letter, um, and then I just went down and I uh talked to Gay and Sandy. Uh, and I, I gave them the letter, and then I kinda told them what we wanted to do, um. I'm much better at talking to someone than I am writing it, so, uh, so that, that's the reason why I did that. They were both okay with it, they understood what we were doing, and, and I don't think we hurt anybody's feelings, so. So, we need to approve this, this new resolution because it's got the thirty-month cemetery permanent CD, that's the, that's the official name that we have at Bank Midwest, and then it's got the Wallycomb Downen accounts. They're not open yet, but they will be open when we get done with this resolution here, so.
One question, was Donna Aldaig still in the pool?
No.
She's not.
Donna, um, Donna has resigned and, um.
The reason to asking that, Steve.
Yeah, she's on the, yeah, she's on the, yeah, we'll have to remove her.
We should get that changed.
Yeah, she will have to be removed, and Amanda Miller had sent me an email, and she has resigned her uh position at a pool board committee, um, Albert and I are in discussion on who we wanna replace Amanda with, and we haven't come up with an appropriate name as of yet, uh, we will keep council informed as to who we feel we'd like to put on her.
So, can we, uh, since Rob brought that up, can we approve this, but.
Take her name on?
Make sure we know that Donna's not gonna be on there.
That's correct, council will have to make sure that they are aware of that Donna's name will be taken off it.
So, can we also do this then, let's say that we wanna put Albert Swans on there, so he can be a signer on that?
True.
Just in case Bell or I are out of the country.
Unless you wanna put my name on her.
Doesn't make any difference to me, but.
Unless I have to sign my name, unless trouble.
Okay, unless, unless Steve on there, if that's okay with you guys.
Time and me.
I would uh accept a motion for the Westside accounts with the changes of Donna Aldaig being removed, removed from the pool renovation check-in and my name being installed. Motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to accept the uh, resolution twenty-fourteen oh nine with the changes made, Donna Aldaig will be removed and my name will be instated, roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay. We just got one?
No.
Or I mean, one, no, we got two, no.
We got one today and, um, this isn't something that I like to do, but I did it today just because Troy wants to get started, and if we can get some new sidewalk in town, I think that's beneficial for the, for the city. Uh, it's not anything difficult.
So has Gail had a chance to look at?
No, actually Gail hasn't looked to be the one of them, but, um, as far as the storage shed goes, we need to know the size. Ten by twelve, and that's fine in that area. We need to know, uh, that it's, that it's movable, um, and what we need to say with this, and I talked to Deb already about it, um, we need to, we need to, we need to make the motion that we accept this as long as it's not too close to the lot lines, cause it's not set yet.
Oh, they haven't made a designated?
No.
They got the building bought, as far as I'm.
Yeah, which is fine, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, no.
They buy a grody, a grody one?
I don't, she didn't say.
I'm not sure, but, but I, I know they were looking at him, and I, as far as I know, they bought one.
Yeah.
Could've been one from, uh, Don Dutt's or somewhere, there's some down there somewhere.
Okay, anything else you wanna add to that then, Chris, that, to make sure that it's all gonna be legal and stuff?
No.
Okay.
Just as long as it's not too close to the lot line, we, we see that the, uh, the size right there.
So they wanna put sidewalk in at Don Dutt's?
Yeah, they wanna just replace sidewalk there as well.
And that would be the south, south or the east side?
Roughly fifty feet, the east.
East side?
Yeah. Roughly fifty feet, Troy didn't know for sure, but the lot's only sixty feet there, so.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask council, we're gonna do this one at a time, because there's some litigation involved in, in the Deb Adams one, and it looks like the Don Dutt was gonna fly, cause he just wants concrete, right?
Yep, that should be easy.
Yeah, so let's, let's, I'll take a motion to approve the Don Dutt.
I'd make a motion to approve the Don Dutt sidewalk.
Second?
Second motion.
Uh, been, uh, moved and seconded to approve Don Dutt's building permit application, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to Deb Adams', and we're gonna make some restrictions on this, as Chris has wished, that uh, we know building size for sure, correct?
We know the size for sure, yes.
That, that is ten by twelve?
Yeah.
Okay, that it is, would you want movable, you said?
It is movable.
Okay, but do we want it permitted or not, no?
No, we just need to make sure that since it's not set, we need to make sure that when they do set it.
It's not.
Too close to the.
Lot lines, okay, and that's the only thing in question on that, correct?
Right.
What is the footage of the lot line?
Uh, five feet on either side yard and fifteen feet on our rear yard.
Yeah, I knew that was fifteen, but I wasn't sure about the other.
But, unli, unless, unless you set it by an alley and then it can be up to, it can be as close as three feet from the alley.
Portable building?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay. Motion, please? For the Deb Adams' building permit?
I would make that motion with that description.
With the exceptions to be so noted, given to the homeowner?
Yep, and I'll let her know that in the morning.
Okay, second?
Second.
Been moving seconded to approve Deb Adams' building permit, with the exceptions to make sure that everything is done according to Hoyle?
I just wanna point something out here, sure, sure, if we have a roll call vote, we'll be in even five for the night.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
We ain't, we ain't having no roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Shucks.
We were going for a record too.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Uh, okay. Uh, public forum, uh, Chris is gonna mention that the Northwest Iowa League of Cities meetings in Storm Lake, it's this Thursday. Uh, how soon do you have to know, Chris?
Tomorrow.
One for me.
Um, social hour starts at five, dinner's at six. Listen, the program will be a presentation on Stormwater and Battle of the Campsite Practices.
It's at King's Point.
Storm Lake is, uh, basically the, the people at Storm Lake are gonna be talking about it, Storm Lake's got an awful lot with that in the last few years. One for you? Uh, yeah, the only other thing that I've got in there is we got our letters from INS.
Oh, yeah.
Three hundred and twenty dollars for the shelter house, and we got three hundred dollars for the, uh, for the.
And you're aware of it?
Furniture library.
Somebody sent them a thank you card and a letter, or something like that.
These guys?
Huh?
No, we're, we're not, nope.
Been pretty fortunate, that INS, we're pretty, pretty supportive of the city.
Otherwise, you're sending thank yous out, generally you're busy doing thank yous. Rick, any to add?
Who?
Chris, you wanna talk about Mark?
Um, yeah, I don't think I wanna really say anything yet, but what I will say is that Mark's been, he's been discussing stepping down and, uh, actually, we talked to him a little bit about coming in and helping us out when Myron comes in and, uh, don't have everything completely worked out there, but, but I think he'll come in and help us out, and so. We'll know more at the next meeting.
Any, anybody got anything to add?
No, I don't have.
Uh, Chris, there's one thing I wanted to bring up. Um, I think you did a good job. Uh, you followed up with Gary's recommendation as far as, uh, car removals, and you got a response from everybody, correct? Do I understand it?
Yeah, all good, but I never, we, we didn't get a response.
So, I, I think, uh.
How's their, how's their cuts been since we got the electricity deal? That's coming out pretty good. We're collecting our money for the electric.
I wouldn't say we're collecting all of it. I will tell you that, uh, over the winter, we had, um, two houses, uh, where we shut the water off in late November, I'd say, probably early, middle of November, whatever it was, we shut the water off. But you needed to stay in the house. And then, uh, April first, or tenth, or whatever day it was, when we could disconnect the electricity, they flipped out. And I, and I'll tell you that one bill was twenty-five hundred dollars for the winter.
What do you do, huh?
Nothing we can do. There is something we can do about it. Lynn, Lynn, uh, sends, sends paperwork into the state, and, uh, this time of year, we've, I don't know how many checks we've received this year. And the last year, we got one for.
The lottery.
Five hundred dollars. And this year, we've gotten a couple thousand dollars, I think. Two thousand, yeah. So, pat Lynn on the back. So, that's the only way we can collect that money.
Should be the next week, watch some TV. Watch that bill.
I would come on our housing deal, or get, get me dollars.
Could you and I go sit down and have a little discussion? Yeah, yeah, we, we. We're gonna, we're gonna.
What was that, Gary?
Well, on our, I mean, the cabinet, I'll just.
Oh.
Something we should be kinda looking into, I think, with the kids.
Should we have that on the next meeting?
I think we should, what you think, Pete?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Uh, Lynn just asked the question, when is our next meeting gonna be? Memorial Day is the next scheduled meeting, so.
We need to get anything done for the first meeting, do you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're getting, are we that pressing? You know, we've got the, we've got the street recommendations that we're looking at. That doesn't have to be done right away, I don't think.
Well, I don't think you wanna do that, anything to nineteenth, 'cause that's just a week from now, and Myron won't have any kind of a report or anything to give to us since he comes on board that day, the nineteenth. If you wanted to wait till, you could do on June second, but then you're gonna have another one June ninth? Or do you wanna just erase the, the, the main one, or?
We don't necessarily have anything pressing. I mean, if we do, between now and then.
We have an emergency meeting.
Call a special meeting.
I'd say I should just wait till the ninth. You could miss out on the twenty dollars, but.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah. You guys, these guys get twenty-five?
Well, you were here for that meeting, we're here.
Or is it just the doobies?
Didn't know we got anything.
Visitors, any? Linda, you have, got any?
I'm not gonna work.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I think to raise money at the farm festival, we should have a dunk tank, and you can dunk at the mayor or any of the council members.
Good job, I like that.
I'd like to do that, but I have to run the bagel stand, so I have to.
I, I volunteered, but I gotta help Rob run the bagel stand.
I'd rather do it.
Did you see him? He said that was the complete straight lane.
I do run the bagel stand.
I know you don't.
That doesn't mean you get out of the dunk tank. That doesn't mean you get out of the dunk tank. So, see, you don't do that anymore, so you can do the dunk tank.
No, I can't, I got the, the.
Don't you think?
Hey, hey, on that same token, council, why can't we just take it and turn it around and make it city?
There you go.
That wouldn't be as fun.
Now, you're sure?
There are a lot of people out there that would like to dunk here.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure.
Fixing up the crack.
Steve, I'll make a motion that way.
Adjourn?
Adjourn.